I'd like to call to order the Buckport Town Council meeting for Thursday, October 12th, 2017. Road call, please, Kathy.
Joseph York.
Here.
Paul Rabs.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Donovan.
Here.
Robert Carmichael.
Okay, item three, presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have none. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being nine, 2617, police call to Verona Island.
Yes, again, this is a call that was necessitated by the report of a person on the bridge which was responded to and she was escorted to Bucksport where she met with a deputy when he arrived.
Okay, item B, Down East Transportation, September 2017 ridership.
This is our bus and cab and I hope people are noticing that the cab usage has gone up dramatically. The Senior Resource Group and Leslie Rabs has been spearheading to get out the information that this service is available. And if you'll notice that where we used to have one page with just a few, we're now up to, on the 13th, we had 20 different uses for that. So, this is for the same $100 a week and people are taking advantage of it much more. So, thanks to Senior Resource and Leslie for working on this.
Any questions on either of those items?
I just wanted to be thankful for what the police called over to Verona because if they're getting there before the sheriff, I think that's, they're maybe handling it very well. I'm glad that that happened, so I appreciate that.
Okay, item six, new ordinances to be considered or introduced. Negative. Have anything, Peter? Okay, item seven, discussion items for managers' clarification or direction or council discussions. First one being Royal Ridge Drive, road acceptance request. Susan.
Go through the Streets and Roads.
Yes, Councilor Carmichael chaired the committee on that.
We talked about that in the Streets and Roads Committee and Susan mentioned the need for more information from DEP to determine whether or not the actual site complied with what the permit was requiring, so we're gonna table that for a couple more weeks until we can get the information. I think he said two weeks. Back to the council.
All right. Item B, Wilson Hall.
This is just an update. There are, Main Street Bucksport is working on grant applications for steeple-related work. We've had some more donations. The enterprise is printing the names of people who were doing donations, were taking those over the counter. We've also had a party who indicated that they would be submitting a proposal for use of the property and a request to the council to consider that proposal and that will likely be available to the council at the next council meeting.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to item eight, agenda items. First one being approve Royal Ridge, I guess we're tabling that. So, we'll go on to item B to approve or solve R. 2018-21 to approve sewer commitments for July 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2017, in the amount of $198,915.06. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C to approve resolve R. 2018-22 to approve payment requisition number 25 in the amount of $32,503.03. And this is for the sewer, I mean for the treatment plant?
Yes.
How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Going on to item number nine, resignations, appointments, or assignments, or elections. I did notice we have the booths upstairs.
Yes, I've had eight votes so far. It started on Tuesday, Kathy's in the room.
Quite a few absentee ballots going out, eh?
Yeah, well, just eight.
Oh, those are the voters you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other things out of resignations or appointments? If not, we'll go on to item 10. Item 10, approval of quitclaim deeds and discharges of deeds. I don't believe we have any. We'll go on to item 11, which is the town manager's report.
First, the Historical Society got a grant to assist in redoing the roof of their building and unfortunately they ran into some additional expenses related to the need for re-sheathing part of that building, which has increased the cost. They have come and asked for assistance from the town to offset some of that additional cost and I'm asking for a finance committee meeting to discuss that request prior to the next council meeting. I met with some representatives of the Senior Resource Group to discuss the status of a number of initiatives that they support here in the community. Some of the items such as automatic openers for the municipal building entrance, handrails at the gazebo on the waterfront, consideration of road striping on local roads beyond the core, encouraging businesses to participate in the accessibility grant program, and a housing committee are in various stages of progress. Other items such as increasing public transportation, signage for public transportation, and the location of seasonal benches in the downtown are under discussion as well. I want to thank this active and involved group for the work that they do on behalf of improving the community, not only for seniors but for everyone. I've been asked to participate in a panel discussion at the Transforming the Region Conference sponsored by Eastern Main Development Corporation on Monday, October 16th. I will be speaking in a session on mill redevelopment that features Bucksport and Millinocket. I would like to thank Bucksport resident Scott Boland for the drone footage that he did of the mill and the town that he is allowing me to use, as well as Heart and Soul for their video and Chris Grindel for some great still shots. Bucksport has much to be proud of and I am honored to be able to speak about the efforts of this community and its residents. A big thank you to the members of the freshman class and their advisors and Rich Rotella who spent Wednesday morning helping to beautify the walkway in Guggens Park by raking leaves and picking up apples and cleaning the fence. I had the opportunity, when they finished their work, to thank them for it and they were featured on the news on Wednesday night also. But I think it is important to make sure that you all know what great work they did too and it is wonderful to get our young people involved in caring for the community at this age. As I noted in my last manager's report, the Marina season ends on Monday, October 15th. Congratulations to the staff for another great season. And the Marina floats, as well as the town dock and fishing dock floats, are scheduled to be removed on October 23rd and 24th after Ghostport. A reminder to all in that respect that Ghostport festivities will be held the weekend of the 21st and 22nd and I encourage everyone to come down and participate in the variety of activities that they have planned. The town advertised our old backhoe for sale and we received three bids. The high bidder was William Reed of Bath, Maine for $26,600 and we recommend approval of sale to that highest bidder. Proceeds from the sale go to the Highway Equipment Reserve. And finally, a reminder of the EPA grant open house at the Heart and Soul Building on Tuesday, October 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Staff from the Ilan Consulting Group will be on hand to provide information and answer questions. The only thing I would ask is approval of that backhoe bid acceptance.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the backhoe bid. Anything further from the public on that item? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
David, Susan, on your last thing there about the EPA grant, is there a better time for people to show up to that or is it just sort of a running loop that they'll do?
It's a, the 11 to 7, it's going to be a series of sections with boards for people to have input on, different ideas, et cetera, regarding things. So, the hope is that it'll be sort of steady all day. People, there'll be a process going through, there'll be people helping people, but there's no one time actually that is better than another.
Thanks.
Kids did a great job on the interviews. They had a great job, obviously, with all these southern.
Is this a public hearing?
No, we have to set the public.
Okay, okay.
That would be at the next.
This is, yeah, okay.
And they got you a good signature.
Oh, thank you.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take up the licenses first. You're gonna go on to item 12, set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve of any licenses or permits. We're gonna start with the licenses. First one being miscellaneous license, Leslie Warmanbacher, Buckport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce for Ghostports.
It's that time of year. Ghostport is Saturday, October 21st. We have successfully managed to put the Coffin Race on Main Street, so we've already talked to Chief Gagin and he's, we're back on board and we're happy and that is good, we like that. Hopefully this year though, well, not hopefully, it's not gonna rain this year. Just not gonna let that happen.
That's a good hope.
Nope, it's just not going to, no, can't. Because last year, if you recall, it did. It rained the whole entire day and yet we still had about 500 people show up, which is fairly impressive because it was really wet. So, I hope to see a lot of you there and I brought the proposed, it's pretty, this is pretty set now, schedule. There's only a few holes. I need pumpkins. If anybody grew any pumpkins and they wanna offer them up to us, because I usually get three farms that give me pumpkins and one farm didn't even plant pumpkins this last year and then the other, one farm that I contacted, they, it just, they didn't have anything worth even given. So, I have one of my three farms that's gonna give me pumpkins and they are gonna give me more than they normally do, but, so if anybody knows of any pumpkins, I really do need them. And of course, we always encourage everyone to enter into the Coffin Race. Really do need more teams.
I'm a chili judge.
Chili judge, yes, I know you're being mentioned, that's awesome. One of the greatest things about Ghostport to me is how it truly involves so many different groups of people. It's, it's the greatest event to me because I don't have to, I don't have to play the instruments, I just literally have to be the conductor and that is a wonderful thing. Each, you know, Heart and Soul's doing the chili cook-off and the PTO does the brunch with the witches and this year, the Bucksport Y is gonna do the trunk retreat. And they, they just do it, you know what I mean? Like, they come together and they make it happen. It has a very communal feel in that way that I wish I could convey to every event we do. But I did bring you some schedules and of course you guys have to approve it all. The road will be closed, Main Street will be closed, just that area from mechanic to essentially right before the pharmacy from 1:00 to 3:00. And then, of course, in the morning at 10:00 a.m. when we, when everybody fills the street, it closes it as they walk down, quote unquote. So, two times.
And how many pumpkin berry would you plant?
Well, last year we had, let's see, it's like higher math right now. We had 225 pumpkins last year and that was in the pouring rain and we had about 10 left over that didn't get used. So, if we have a great weather day, which we will, we're gonna need some pumpkins. We'll go through them so fast. Oh, one new thing, they're new, I don't, I'm hoping it sticks. The Bethray Cancer Center out of Ellsworth does this thing every year that they call, hold on, smashing cancer one pumpkin at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, they, it's this event that they were doing over in Ellsworth where salons, you know, you could give a $5 donation and put one of those paper pumpkins up in the window kind of thing and then the salon itself would decorate a pumpkin in accordance to a cancer awareness. So, you know, maybe lymphoma and they'd use bright lime green or whatever and put the ribbon on it. And then they were going, they were picking a date and then people were just literally smashing the pumpkins. It's pretty cool. But this year, they're actually gonna come and at the beginning, the trebuchet goes from 11:30 to 2:00 and then 2:30 to 4:00. And so, at 11:30, they're gonna do a little ceremony and these folks that decorated these pumpkins get to launch them in the trebuchet instead, which is kinda neat. So, it's a different way of smashing that pumpkin. So, they're really excited and they're gonna have a booth down there and I think that's kinda nice. And it should draw some people in coming from the Ellsworth area because that's where most of their salons, although Blush, the salon here in town, does participate in that particular program. So, that's kinda how we all got together. So, I'm kinda excited about that, something new and different and on that. Thanks.
Motion approved.
Any other questions?
We have a motion and a second to approve the miscellaneous license for the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, Ghostports. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, the next item is food service. Dino Kissamatakus, am I close?
Yeah.
All right. Doing business is Bucksport House of Pizza. First one is for a food service license and then we're gonna hold a public hearing for the liquor license for you, okay? So, we have a motion to approve. For the food service. We have a motion and a second for approval of the food service license. Anything from the public on this item? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, now, declare the public hearing open for the purpose of a public hearing on a liquor license for Bucksport House of Pizza. Sir?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to say?
Now, you have any questions?
So, you're gonna be a full-service restaurant now?
Well, no, no.
Beer and wine or?
Yeah, beer and wine and it'll just still be, you know, you pay for it and we'll bring it out to you.
Okay. Just a little larger.
Little bit larger, more comfortable.
Okay.
Yeah. But, trying to stay within the range.
Public hearings open. Any comments from the public on this? Any questions? Anything from the council? I believe all of the proper people have signed off on this. So, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
I'm gonna close the public hearing first. Close the public hearing. Now, how would you like?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for Bucksport House of Pizza.
Just a quick clarification for, these recommendations down here, those don't, are they binding that they need to be checked off in the right places and the right? If you look at the police review, he's kinda checked off the municipal one when it's actually a state license.
Which one did that?
Sean on the last page.
Sean, yeah.
And I understand that, I don't, I'm just asking, is that a, is that a required thing or is that just something we do on the town side to?
It's on the town side. You have to sign this one here.
Okay.
This is the one goes to the state.
Okay. Just let Sean know from now on to.
I'll let Sean know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
We have, we had a motion.
Yep.
We had a motion and a second to approve. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes?
Hope Sean's motion.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. You don't mind if I?
I wanted to thank you for all the work that you've been doing on your business.
Oh, thank you.
It's very noticeable and greatly appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Got a new, you know, inspiration, I guess.
Well, we're glad it's here.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, we got a set of public hearing for repeal and replacement of Appendix 1 Solid Waste Flow Control Ordinance to be introduced to the public. We want to have that before, we'll have it at the next council meeting.
That's what you voted to do.
Do we need a vote? Motion to postpone it to the next council meeting?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have the public hearing to repeal and replace Appendix 1 Solid Waste Flow Control Ordinance at the next council meeting. Okay, item 13 is discussion items, not on the agenda. Oh, yeah, jeez. Good thing you're there. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes?
President does.
I was wondering why you're poking?
I thought you were speaking.
That's later.
Okay, item 13, discussion items, not on the agenda for the council or the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items from the public?
Hi there, Stephen St. Peter Jr., proud resident. I had a concept for everybody to consider. How about a dog park for the town of Bucksport? There's been visitors and citizens that would love to see a dog park. I don't know where we would put it exactly. I had the idea of putting it where the Quick Stop used to be, you know, have a nice big open space. Belfast has a beautiful dog park and I think that that would bring the tourists and the citizens out into an open area for their dogs so they don't, you know, poop on the, on the waterfront and stuff and run amok on the waterfront. I just think it'd be a good idea to bring that to you and everybody's been suggesting it, so, what does everybody think?
A lot of towns have them. Maybe something to look at down the road.
Any other discussion items from the public? From the council? Yes, sir?
The, two Wednesdays ago, back on October 4th, I attended the Maine Municipal Association Convention over in Augusta and I just wanted to, I'm not gonna go through a lot of detail here, but one of the breakout sessions was entitled Budgets and Taxes: Addressing Change and Challenges and actually three towns stood up and I'm just gonna bulletize some things for you here, but of interest was the town of Madison in 2014, they had issues up there with the mill. They had a $1.4 million rainy day fund, which they used up most of it. What they did is they then went out and got a $2.5 million line of credit with interest at about $4,000. Then in 2015, what they did is they came along on their municipal budget and they slashed $600,000 out of it by, some people lost their jobs and people that went into retirement, they didn't backfill. And then the school system, over, well over six figures. And then they also did some things with their police department. They went to a contract with the sheriff's office, which happens to be based out of Madison. But they, they, they claimed that they went from a crisis to future funding mode. Madison is about the same population here as Bucksport, so they, I just bring this up, that here's a town about the same timeframe, similar issues and so forth. We took different paths, but you know where our mill rate is right now and the town of Madison, they're happy to be at 21.5. Next speaker was a fellow town selectman from Dover-Foxcroft. And up there, what they're, they're also a population a little smaller than Bucksport but not much. Their issue up there were roads and paved and gravel roads and they let them go and go and go. And so, they, and also a couple years ago, they changed their mode of operation, trying to think the right word here to say, but now the people vote on any major funding that takes place up there, so they have their discussion and then they vote. And then they kept voting no, no, no to roads. Well, now there's quite a bond that they've had to go pull and they're finally doing their roads, but it's in, it's in the area of $1.6 million because they let their roads go to hell, so to speak. And their mill rate is currently at 20.9. And then finally, Wilton was the third presenter. And Wilton lost a couple businesses in town. They had issues with roads and sidewalks. Town evaluation hasn't been addressed since 2006. The schools up there, they have poor interaction, next to none, with the RSU. With their problems that came up, they, capital accounts went to none, they put no money into capital accounts. They, because they didn't maintain their treatment plant, they had significant failures, costing them some $10,000, excuse me, $10 million. And bottom line is, their mill rate has now gone to 20.65. So, it was, it was 45 minutes of jaw-dropping information that came about. So, I just wanted to share with you that, you know, where we are with our tax rates and/or the towns we've had to go to. And then at the end of the day, at the Augusta Civic Center, they have vendors throughout in the main area and the MRC was there and Greg, whose last name escapes me.
Founder.
Yep, he was there and he actually showed me the blueprints of the new facility. And they are online now, you can actually see them online, but they're putting in cement foundations, rebar cement foundations. He was quite happy to tell me that they have ordered and paid for the building steel. They hope to have the building up by the end of December, all enclosed, and that April 1st is still their target date to start receiving municipal waste, that $70 a ton tipping fee. The, what they call the wet end of the process is running way behind. That will probably not be ready until late fall, early winter of next year, but they're gonna start accepting the trash, municipal waste on April 1st, that's his plan. So, that's what he had to contribute. So, very interesting day, but.
Did you have any folks asking you questions about how we're doing?
Pardon me?
Did you have any folks asking you or Susan asking questions about how we're doing?
The reason we were, I was invited to speak in Bangor is because of how Bucksport's doing.
But it was nothing down there, this isn't Bangor?
No, this is, this.
This is more short-term.
Bucksport is an anomaly in communities that have lost value and in communities in general right now in terms of forward motion in a difficult financial environment or a difficult environment in general in terms of the world and how people are behaving in it. The, the person who wrote the article, there's something in the water in Bucksport, went, that, that asked me what I thought was the reason that Bucksport was different, what is causing this. And I, I believe I told the truth when I said it's the people here and the attitude with which they are moving forward in ways that certainly having the financial planning that this town did over many years helps, but, but even that wouldn't have been enough. If the people of this community hadn't, in all the ways they have, gotten involved in all these various and sundry organizations, but more than that, just the community in general. The freshman class was excited to be helping Bucksport be more beautiful. I talked to them and that was, you know, we, we wanna help, we wanna help. And that attitude permeating from, it's just not normal and it's especially not normal in a community that sustained the kind of loss that this one did. So, I, all the credit for where this town is where it goes, goes to the people in it, the leadership it's had over ye many years and the people of all opinions who are stepping up to try and make it better. You know, everyone doesn't agree on what better is, but everyone's heart is in the right. right place looking for better and not dealing from the negative of what we can't do here. It's about what can happen and that, I apologize for that, but it really is unusual. And I think what Paul was expressing was this is your norm. This is what you think communities do. But if you step outside of here and go to some of these conferences, you start to learn just how unusual this place is in what it's doing and how it's approaching it. Not, not just from the town, but, but all these other groups that are doing things for the betterment of the community. So, that is, your norm is abnormal to much of the state. If you were to go and talk about...
Yeah, this, this, this town manager at Madison, when he made his presentation, he was ecstatic because they were down to 21.5 mill rate.
And they cut it.
And, and, but they only had a $1.4 million rainy day fund. I mean, town managers repeated, you know, those who have gone before us that, you know, built up that rainy day fund. And, oh, by the way, they did not, because they had monkeyed around with their evaluations and so forth in the town of Madison, they did not qualify for sudden and severe, you know? And then when I, we ever got down to the town of Wilton and the, the town manager there said, "We don't, basically, we don't talk with the RSU." I mean, my jaw dropped. I mean, look how, how we are so tied, tied together with the, the RSU, whether it be the Y or the interaction we have between the town. And the word I was trying to think of, the town of Dover-Foxcroft, they changed their charter, actually, so that whenever they approved, the people have to approve things. So, they, they talk about it for, you know, maybe in April and then November they decide whether, and that's where they got themselves into this major hole with roads and now they, it's coming back to really, really haunt them. So, town manager just expressed this way better than I could've, but that's what I, I drew out of this, like, phew, boy. Talk about, you know, the creative things that she has led us through. It's, everybody knows, we've all lived through it, but boy, it was eye, eye-opening and jaw-dropping all at the same time, so...
Thanks.
Okay, any?
Yeah, I'd like to, on behalf of Heart and Soul, Nancy couldn't be here tonight, I just wanna highlight a couple of their areas. This is a great segue into, into that group because although I'm there very sparingly, unfortunately, they're a group of committed people, small group with some extended volunteers that do, are doing just tremendous, tremendous things to help move forward. And just a couple of the, I think some of you may have seen the video. Susan talked about the video that was produced and it was played at the movie theater a few times. They received great reviews through their different sources. They've been doing, continuing the listening. The listening stage is just about over, listening to all the stories. They're gonna have over a thousand pages of things that they've been kept, putting together into a data format and, and concise, concisely turn it into themes, which is sort of where they are now, identifying, I think it was eight to 10 themes. I may be off a little bit on that. Well, they're, they're going to schedule a series of, of other sessions where they'll bring the public in and actually put words into these themes that'll capture the theme on healthy communities, the theme on education, this type of what we want for our community and what we're being told is wanted in our community around those different topics. So, that's one of the next things they'll be doing. They had a training, Phase 2 training, there are four phases in this. They had a Phase 2 training on September 16th. She relayed to the group what a tremendous job they're doing from the Orton Foundation's perspective on, in this whole process. And it is a process. It's, it's hard, it's hard at the beginning to see where it's going, but where they are right now, you can stock to see where the fruits of their labor will, will yield themselves and, and it's coming together. They've used the Heart and Soul headquarters for a number of different events and on October 17th, was just mentioned, the, the group, the Adapt, I guess it's a land adapt for the, the open house for the mill site property will be using that, that location. And then they were notified on September 26th that their organization, along with other individuals and groups, has been selected as the rising star of Eastern Maine by Eastern Maine Development Corporation and a number of them will be attending a luncheon and a conference at the Cross Insurance Center on the 16th. So, kudos to Nancy Minot and all the, all the great volunteers in that group. They really, if you could just see the effort that they're putting into trying to make Bucksport a better place and, and working with other groups to do so.
Any other discussion items? Yes, sir.
Just my two cents where it's, it's never one big thing. I mean, I think some big things are down the pike, working with AIM, on ideas and thoughts as to what should go in there, can go in there. I think, I, I'm always surprised when somebody talks about the mill site, they seem to think that the town owns the mill site. And of course, unfortunately, we know that's not true. But working with AIM when that time comes because there's a hundred little things doing, going on as, that leads to this type of editorial that appeared in the Ellsworth American. And it is the little things that make the difference and pays the way for the bigger things that come. And they're coming, they'll get here eventually. I think that, and I'm, I wanna encourage residents, it would be helpful, and I know a lot of residents do this, and the town council, but when a new business opens, we should all be in there saying, "We're glad you're in town. Thank you for opening your business here." And then support those local businesses. And when a local business closes, I like to ask the people, well, how many times were you in there to see what they offered? And a lot of people do go, but a lot of people don't. And just to stick your head in there and say, gee, we're really glad you're here, as opposed to an empty storefront, that doesn't take much. That's one of the kinds of little things that encourages other businesses to come here. So, I think going the right path and I think in a relatively short period of time, we're gonna start to see some bigger results. Keep up the good work.
I got just a little, I've, for a while, I've had a, I always call it a little bit of a dream, but to create a rec center for, for the town of Bucksport. I had one person that was kind of interested in investing, but I haven't really had a plan to give to them. I've been working on one and I've actually, I believe I might've gotten a piece of land at a decent value to maybe put this rec center in. I just didn't know if, there might be some people that might wanna help me organize a, it'll have to be a committee, but somebody might be able to give me some ideas maybe on extra funding for grants and whatnot. And so, I guess my question is more for Susan if, and maybe even the Main Street groups and whatnot, but maybe somebody I can just talk to a little more about it because I'm not good on that part of it, but, so, maybe we can...
There's a rec committee that's acts in an advisory capacity to the Y that we have now, but this rec committee's been in place for some time, you know, that I think if you had some idea that, that going, putting it through that committee would be an appropriate way to figure out what the...
I did get moved to that, so maybe we...
You're on it.
Perfect.
There you go, you put an automatic way in.
Perfect, that'd be awesome. If we could set up a, is there a way to set up a meeting for that?
They have, they have, Chief Gagin is the chair of that committee. If you were to speak to him about when their next meeting is, I'm sure you could get on the agenda.
Fantastic. All right, thank you very much.
Any other discussion items? If not, we're going to, we've already set a public hearing for the, the replacement or repeal. Item 14 is designation of topic for committee assignments or scheduling committees. I believe we have something for the finance committee to do with Wilson Hall.
Historical society.
Oh, historical building, right. Got it. Who's the, who's the director? You have a chairman of that?
You wanna do it before next meet, half an hour, hour?
Half an hour would be...
And what's the, what's the other one that's...
Streets and Roads.
How long is that one?
Streets and Roads, not more than a half hour. So, if we did one at 6:00 and one at 6:30, that'd be...
I am in Washington next meeting, so if one of you guys are gonna be...
We do the finance at 6:00 and...
Okay.
I think that's it, isn't it? We don't have any others, do we?
Because I don't want you in.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're gonna go onto item 15, which is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Have a good evening.